Please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a roll call please?
Matthews.
President.
Dean.
No.
Sean.
Yes.
Alright. New business. We've got to get an account open for the court system and Shawna and Cindy need to be, they can be the only two signers on it. So we've gotta have it in the minutes that we have. We gotta vote to allow them to open this account and to make them to be the signers on this checking account. We talked about it when we were voting. So. If I can get a motion to open a checking account for the Show Me Court System and allow Shawna Millian and Cindy McCloy to be the two signers.
Aye.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. Alright. We received our resignation of our prosecutor and our city judge, so we need to put that out before bid. Need to advertise it. Like we do any other, anything else in the Daily Journal and online. Can I get a motion to put out the bid, the hiring of a city prosecutor and the hiring of a city judge?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, for the Show Me Court System, we're gonna have a dual monitor. We talked about it last month a little bit, so we need to go ahead and purchase that because as of July thirty first, that all goes into effect.
How much do you buy a dual monitor?
Gotta have the two screens like the police department has. So that's in this. Kinda went through them, looked at them.
So the monitors you have won't, um. Okay.
No, she has her own, own monitors.
Oh, so you're not needing like a split screen, it's actually, it's too physical monitor.
It's actually two. Yes, yes.
She actually has to have a screen and then the, um, wall mount and then the assistant. Now, well, the drop box also.
Is that like a hydraulic arm that's on those, on that screen?
Yes.
I, I was just down at the assessor's office earlier and they, they have a pretty cool system there.
So. We've got three different options for the monitors, uh, two hundred twenty-seven inch ones, twenty-three inch. One of them.
We kinda looked those over and we thought this was the best choice, but when we were comparing those, but.
Yeah, it's, was it one thirty-four ninety-nine? That's for a twenty-seven inch full HD monitor.
I don't think we decided this difference. The size?
Well, we had, we looked at two twenty-sevens and we looked at one twenty-three. I think the twenty-sevens were pretty equal, one's a curved and one's flat. So the curved one is one fifty-nine ninety-nine and the flat one is one thirty-four ninety-nine. Which, which one?
In the corner for me, yeah.
Flat ones.
She says flat.
She says flat.
Yeah.
Okay.
The curved one here for watching TV, isn't it?
So can I get a motion or does anybody have any comments on anything other than what we just talked about, these three different screens? Not?
Is this what we're looking at, something like?
That's how it should look when, when it's done.
So do we have to get a, uh, separate keyboard? No? Okay.
Nope, they have, this is something that goes with it, that will, after we get the screens and we'll go onto the arms.
Okay.
Cindy, are you the one that got all this information together for this?
Less than, what, that, they? No.
Nope.
Okay.
And I actually asked us McKinney too because I asked him what was.
That's what he's got.
comparable to what he had, if he could find what they had and so he said he would.
Okay, so what's the pers- what, how are you gonna go about getting that purchased?
I have no clue, but usually.
So, um, can she come to you and you, is this on Amazon?
Hmm, no, this is not. Well, it is on Friday.
Okay, so maybe you can get it on Amazon. Get it ordered.
It's not a problem if somebody's okay with us using that.
Well, is that something we're supposed to talk about later?
It's not a lot. But she doesn't have an authorized card and, and less than you would want to come and, whatever you.
Well, like your, the card that's in your name, authorize them to use that card to make that purchase. I just wanna make sure we get it handled and it doesn't just sit there for a month and we still ain't got the monitor. Okay.
Okay. So can I get a motion to approve two twenty-seven inch HD monitors at one thirty-four ninety-nine apiece? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is the, uh, wall mount for the dual monitors is fifty-three forty-nine.
So we're looking at this one?
Yes, gotta check what's on the top of that thing, yeah, see if they're copied. Both of, both the two that you're looking at hold the same weight, do all the same sizes, just one's cheaper than the other. It is, uh, fifty-three forty-nine for the dual wall mount. I get a motion to approve the dual wall mount to go with the dual monitor system?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Next up is discussion of a time clock, uh, and approval to purchase.
How's this gonna work with the cops, police department? What about this drop box though? Yeah, the drop box, she'd have to have that.
Sorry.
It's on her list.
Back up real quick to the back where we're at. With the new Show Me Court System, we have to wait to make payments even after hours, which requires a drop box. So the one that we found, that they had found was one twenty-nine and it'll have to be mounted through the wall into the court clerk's office. Anybody have any questions on that?
So all it's gonna be outside is just the slot?
Slot. I suppose it's mine, I didn't see it, I know I saw it earlier, but I'm curious.
I do. What about there was a terrorist attack or something as far as a firecrackers and caught this place on fire? I mean, if it's going into the building.
It would be just like the mail, I mean, I can show you, on here, just like the mail drop boxes and everything that they got everywhere.
Just.
Yeah.
Cindy, was there something about that that you were telling me of, about that drop box? It seems like you were telling me something about it, um. Maybe, um.
Just gonna be enough to where they can slide the little envelope in and it'll be in a contained unit that has to have a key to be able to even get in on the side?
Is that what you were getting at?
So on the inside, it'd be contained?
Got a box.
So it'd be metal inside?
Yes.
Okay.
Got a full on box under, on the inside of the building. Okay, anybody have any questions or comments on that? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the drop box?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, now. Discussion of the time clock system and approval to purchase.
How is this gonna work for the police? I can't see them having to come in here like if something goes wrong or, I mean, how's that gonna work?
Well, I talked to Richard Farley and, uh, when his guy is going to be here, it's very fun, I keep telling him they're on twelve hour shifts now. Basically, they report to work and they have a payroll clerk that keeps their time. Anyhow, they, they come to work and, um, raise them in.
But what else does it have as another way to work?
Don't they have to come in and pick a car up to start their shift?
No.
It was approved, I think, two years ago or so for the officers that they've been a certain distance to take their vehicles home.
Would it not be like anywhere else though, if they had to come in early, they'd notify their supervisor, they'd have their time cards based off of it? That's typically anywhere else you go at Adams.
I'm not sure, I guess my question is, is what? Where, where it's coming from because, uh, all our overtime and stuff is bringing pretty good, I believe with the police departments, gotten theirs under control since we got five officers.
I understand if we had, you know, twenty, thirty, forty people, we had to keep track and we have less than ten.
That sounds prob- the problem is, is like Powers explained to me last week, nobody's writing their time down on a daily basis, they are doing it on a weekly basis based on what they remember. And that's the main issue.
It's a form of oversight to have a time clock, monitor the time, a form of oversight.
So, um, I think that we've been very, very, very careless and we need to start with the time clock. If Powers, let's say that Powers gets a call on his way to work, no big deal, we get that taken care of, fill out a manual slip, she's, she's gonna take care of the time. And, uh, she can go anywhere we adjust and put in what time you actually got to work. So that's gonna be, should be an issue, otherwise, you get to work at two fifty-five, let's say. Watch your clock, go to work, when you leave, watch your clock, get on home. And the same thing, let's say that something happens and at the end of your shift, same thing, write it down, the next day can see her. Say, hey, I had an exception last night, I worked an extra thirty minutes, I need to have you do a manual override. That way everybody's, keep you, keep you to track their time.
And my understanding is there's an officer on duty all the time now, is that right? We never go like it used to be where it was few hours in the night or whatever, where an officer wasn't here? So there is somebody on duty all the time.
Yeah, it's whatever's on.
So, um, that officer's covering it until you get to work. But this will help with the, you know, like Shawna was explaining, that you can go back to your time cards once a week or the whole week to work. And there has been quite a bit of overtime also.
Now, we do pass along whenever we come on duty and, and get off duty. Um, so we usually show up, every- everybody usually shows up anywhere from twenty minutes to ten minutes early to get pass along from the officer that's on duty. So they can get off at the scheduled time of them getting off. Since we're doing that, we're gonna punch in ten minutes early like normal i- i- if, that's my understanding of, of how you want us to do the, the time clock, right?
Yes.
Okay. Cause sometimes pass along, I mean, we got a lot to, to talk about, they can take twenty, thirty minutes sometimes, um, other times, five minutes, I mean. But we always get here ten minutes early so that guy that we're leaving can get off at, at their scheduled time off.
Well, the way it, the way it is, is we have, uh, five guys. There's twenty-one eight-hour shifts a week, the five guys can cover twenty-five shifts. So there's really four extra shifts, so it's gonna be up to the chief to manage your time and let's say, um, he may have to cut you back. And only schedule you for thirty-six hours to make sure that you have enough time to cover your overlap time. You, you understand what I'm saying?
If, I, I understand that, um, having a new person come in, fill out an application and say, hey, we're scheduling for thirty-six hours. But you might get the extra four, nobody's gonna apply, nobody's gonna wanna work here for thirty-six hours.
This is the charm, our, what we're trying to do is not make overtime.
No, I.
We wanna pay more by the hour. But we wanna, in order to do that, we, if we can control the overtime, then we can get these wages up and, and we've been working on it, so. You know, that's, that's what we wanna do, if we can cur- control overtime, we can get the starting wage up for these calls.
So what you're saying is they'd have thirty-six scheduled patrol hours, but then the other four hours would actually be built into their schedule too as far as passover drop calls?
Right, and it may be, they may be.
So really they're getting forty hours. Gotcha.
They could be scheduled for thirty-eight, but let's say that they average fifteen minute turnover time, fifteen minutes before your shift, fifteen minutes after your shift, whatever it is.
Gotcha, okay. So it's still forty hours.
Forty hours, but I know that there's an extra thirty-two hours that he has available. So those thirty-two hours need to be used to cover your transition period and it'll keep us out of the overtime.
Gotcha, okay. That I understand.
Okay. So, did I answer any questions? Okay. I guess first thing when you figure out is what? I guess first when you figure out, is everybody on board or can we take a vote to switch to time, to time clocks before we go talking about a purchase? Can I get a motion to approve our time clock system?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Um, with that, now we can move forward on figuring out what time clock we want. Anybody got any recommendations? I know this one here is what Minority Offic- Supply suggests and that's the one that they use. Each one, this is. Is that right there? This is biometric time and attendance system.
I like the fingerprint one, cause that's one less thing you gotta try to keep up with. You had a card, you know? Leave it home or something.
Uh, that one is, says the quote on that one is four hundred and ninety-five dollars. Uh, we've got another one. Similar to that one for two hundred and ninety-one.
The other ones all take.
The other ones are all card.
Yep.
So we wanna stick with the fingerprint system?
The one thing that I do like about the four ninety-five is it does, I mean, with QuickBooks. We use, so it will actually move the data from here straight to our computer. It'll, it'll fill in a lot of your, what you're doing manually now.
Okay. Any other suggestions or comments on that? If not, can I get a motion to approve the time queue plus biometric time and attendance system for four hundred and ninety-five dollars?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And you don't have to answer out, uh, off one, is it, or so?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Alright, uh, we need to, uh, Cindy and Shawna can probably tell us more about it. Wanna have a discussion about switching the court to the second Tuesday of the month and moving our city meetings back to the first Tuesday of the month.
Actually, I was, uh, suggesting that a lot of the people that come in here to make their payments get paid on the first few days of the, the month. And they don't have it in time, they don't show up, they get a failure to appear, which lead into a warrant. If it's on the second week, then they got that first week to be able to come in and get it paid. And it would be a big help with me with my end of the month reports. I would be able to get that done and be able to concentrate on the second week for my court.
I don't, I don't see a problem with that, I think it's, it's a good suggestion and a, a good idea. What would it do for yours? Yours pretty much stay the same after the first transfer over?
You want to do it starting in July or August?
Whenever it's, uh, our July is second is, is our next court date and it's right around the corner, I, I don't know if we can get it.
Well, did you not tell me that they're already moving everything back to August though, so we're not gonna have court in July?
Right, citations for September third right now, that's the other side that we're right before.
We, we still have, before the resignations, the judge had explained that he wasn't going to be here for the July. And so the prosecuting attorney had us to do just the ones where the judge wouldn't be needed. It would, it would only be like, they make their monthly payments and things like that and to talk to the prosecuting attorney. If we was, they didn't write any tickets where they would have to see the judge and plead guilty or not guilty, so. We still actually technically have a full roster for July the second, but can send out letters. Or you guys could.
Okay, so leave July alone during August.
Might have to change, our attorney's not available on the first week.
I've got, I've got another city, until the first of the year, next year, I'm, I've booked up the first Tuesday.
You're bad.
I'm scared.
Pretty much what I'm saying. But from my perspective, I mean, I can't do that. Is this in court in the afternoon?
Three o'clock.
Yeah, I don't know, like, wouldn't have to be, with your meeting, I don't know, how long does it take to get through a doctor? What type, yes, it'd be done by, by meeting time at six anyway, right?
Except it just all depends on how many show up, I mean.
If we could move the court, if, go ahead and move the court.
We can do it on the same day, I, I don't care.
And then if it, if it doesn't work out first of the year, we move, then we may, we could change it around to, to fit the attorney's schedule a little better.
Appreciate it.
Is that okay? Is everybody alright with that?
Same.
So we would move the court date from the first Tuesday of the month to the second Tuesday of the month, our meetings will stay the same?
So just do everything all in one.
Or just do it in one, one shot that day?
Are the, are the court dates, is there an ordinance that establishes court dates? Cause it shouldn't just be s- set by your judge.
Usually I, instead of my setting to him and he.
So you, you don't really have any role in the setting of court dates? So if, if, if you do have an ordinance, we need to repeal it because it's separation powers, uh, so you don't need to approve this. Other than for scheduling purposes, if there's a scheduling conflict, if they're gonna be in the same evening, obviously you have to address that. But you don't need to approve their moving of their court dates, as long as, as long as the meeting runs again.
Okay, alright, knock that one out. Alright, um, we're into some issues where Shawna couldn't get any information from the, the banks. So I think First State Bank and Belgrade are the two that were timed here or the one thing?
Yours is still the problem.
So we discussed it before, but we didn't vote to put her on, so we gotta have it in the minutes that we approve or disapprove her being able to call and get information at the banks. So I need a motion to allow Shawna to be able to contact the banks and get information on our accounts.
Motion.
Second?
Stop.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 We've got on here for the look over the ordinances, um, but from what I understand, we're going with the state ordinances for now. And we'll match ours up to what the state has, is that correct?
I'm gonna try to do.
That's what we're gonna try to do. So, um.
Turn on like the model ordinances, follow the models.
So instead of hashing that out in a meeting, we'll have a, a work session, meaning it's not pushing before the first. If that's okay, do move that to a work session in July sometime, um.
Now, when are they gonna start? When are the officers gonna start using? This state ordinance is.
We have to wait till we get all of the equipment and, and I get, there's just everything all of.
So nothing right now, they're gonna continue with it.
We'll do it the same through the card. So we'll move the, the ordinances into a work session in July to try to go over ours and match it up with the state. I don't think we even had the states set yet. Okay. Alright. Now, we need to figure out our two thousand nineteen budget. Lorraine Robbins worked very hard over the past couple of weeks to get all this figured out. So, um, with that said, being that they're not part of the city, they can't physically enter numbers or tell us what goes where. So it's kind of to the board, figure this out. And we got Lori here to kinda tell us a little bit. And everybody, I know it's been short notice, we've been rushed to try to get this in, so we haven't, we haven't had a lot of time to go over this. So, fair with this, it might take. Uh, she did get everything reconciled all the way through May, so we did get that part done. And then as soon as she got the reconciliation done, she started straight into our budget part. Anybody get, I can even pick up a copy of last year, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, and then two thousand eighteen to this year. Everything is caught up through June twentieth, so to give us an idea of where we're at. I got the front page here somewhere, as soon as I find it. Alright. I know the, um, the fire department in their request that we had a couple of weeks ago looking to set their budget to go up about three thousand in their budget from twenty-seven to thirty.
Fire department?
Fire department. Where we're running into the difference of this year and what we've done in the years past, if we can no longer run a court through the general. So trying to extract everything out and then make sense of it has been quite interesting. Should have one like this. Yep. Yep, that's last year's. So. I looked at what we had in the general from two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen and then two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen. And in two thousand seventeen, we had a total revenue of five thirty, five hundred thirty-seven thousand on the general done. And last year, we budgeted five hundred and fifty-six thousand five hundred. So let's. Yes, ma'am, this is Lori.
Lori, if we got you a chair, could you come up here, is that okay, she comes up here?
I can, yeah, my apologies, I'm, I'm on vacation, so. I've got some, yeah. What, what I would recommend for you guys to, um.
Yeah. What, what I would recommend for you guys to, um, or you want me to sit here?
Do you have today?
I have one from today that I made notes when I was in.
We don't have any.
This is the same as you have.
Oh, this?
Two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. That's what I was looking for.
Okay, this.
I should have you one of your stuff. Where is that?
I've got, I've got everything I had today. This is one from today when I was asking questions, trying to keep fine, so this is.
We have another one though, is that just the same one?
It's just the same. Yeah, it's exactly, I just, I took notes from the two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen, two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen. And the differential of what we added and.
You're, you're familiar with all of it. Okay. So we'll start right here. Actual. This is what was budgeted that we thought we could get, and this is how much we'll backwards.
Right.
Okay. So. From our budget from last year. Say a lot of them backwards, no movement. So I wanna know where.
Well, I, here's a recommendation that I would make to you guys, um, have you done budget requisitions from the departments? You have those, I know since our department wants.
Yeah, there, there's, their book is, we have it in the office. Uh, and then the police department had his, which I don't have.
It's in there.
Is it on this one?
Somewhere in there. It's probably towards the back.
Okay, I was gonna say, he turned his in and we looked at it, we looked it over. Here it is right here, on the very back.
Okay, what I would probably do is tonight, if you look over your budget that you adopted for the fiscal year that you're currently in, in June thirty, I would probably just approve that budget for the next fiscal year. And then you can amend it at your next meeting, once you guys have had time to look. Because you're, you're gonna be looking at line items, you're gonna be looking at police revenue, traffic tickets, uh, bonds. You're gonna be looking at grant revenue, you're gonna be looking at gross receipts tax, sales tax. You've got a lot of line items that you're gonna be looking at, not knowing the activity that transpired in the last year and how that's gonna change in the next year. Is the fire department gonna get a initial grant that you have going anywhere, or is the police department, you know, apply for a grant that they, they're getting? So that's gonna change your revenue number. And you can use a starting point and you really need to get it adopted before your fiscal year starts. And then I would make amendments going forward.
So, this number right here.
Yeah, so your, your net income is a negative forty two thousand dollars.
So we've missed our budget by forty two thousand dollars? Okay.
Yeah.
That's all I'm hearing.
Yeah, and you can amend your budget throughout the year, so.
So we're gonna have to do some, instead of adding, it may be hard to add when we're sitting here. We've missed our budget by forty two thousand, so we need to overspend or the revenue just wasn't what we thought it was gonna be. So there's, there's a lot of work to be done. Like you guys, we wanna make sure that we're doing everything we can, but it's gonna be hard to, not only do we, we wanna try to do that, but we got like a forty two thousand dollars a month.
And I mean, some of it might be like payroll, so there are a lot of overtime on the police that you typically don't have, and some of it more expense on that. I mean, you just, and you can look at, you can look at five-year train, you can look at a three-year train, I mean, go back two years and see what the numbers look like.
That's, that's what I was trying to do today with the previous budgets and see where we were at and see what.
And we can work with you on that, we just can't tell you what your numbers should be. Like you, you can tell us what they are and we can help, help her enter them, but that's a management role that we can't do.
Did you say there was a lot of overtime in the police budget?
No, I just used that as, as an example. If, if there was, then that would be a reason why those expenses might be up.
Okay.
Well, here's another good example. Um, we budgeted eighteen thousand dollars for the cemetery. You know, we brought in thirteen two ninety four, so.
Was that on the plots?
Yeah, we didn't sell many plots, a lot of, a lot of, um, you know, so it's forty seven, that's ten percent of, of what we're missing right there. Now, have we, have you noticed people coming in donating? Okay, so.
I'd say at least a couple turns a week.
Okay, uh, we do got information out on the internet, trying to get people to buy plots. The industrial over there, we're gonna try to add a row, uh, to make more land vacant, so we're working on that.
I mean, you could look at what your actual numbers are and you could adopt those numbers as your budget, and then, and then those moving forward. I mean, whatever numbers you guys decide to decide on after starting.
And perhaps, there has been a lot of overtime on the police department. I know that you have the grant from the also, the grant overtime, but there's also been a lot of overtime.
We were in shorthanded for a while.
We did.
And then that caused a lot of, that caused a lot of overtime, but being full staff, I think they're working, they're working hard to keep it within their forty or right at their forty. Recently, when we were, when we were shorthanded, we, there was a lot of, a lot of stuff.
When we were shorthanded, but I also looked back at several, since we've had five officers. And I think Gary reviewed those records.
Last week was the first week that you only had two hours overtime on the whole department. And that was really good, because usually it's twenty five to thirty five hours of overtime. Some of it is grant.
It is grant, it is, some of it is.
But a small part of that, so, um, and that's what I'm saying, if we can get a hold of the overtime, get that down, we can get the your regular hourly rate, we can, we can get that up and be more competitive.
And it was down last week.
Yeah, last week was about where, can you speak?
And those numbers might be skewed a little bit, from what I understand, uh, with the many grants that we get reimbursed on. I, from what I asked, um, the other Lorraine Robbins worker that came in and did the number, was doing the number. Uh, she said that that comes in as grant income, but it doesn't actually take away from the overtime. It doesn't separate the overtime as important overtime. So I, I don't think that has anything to do on, on the overtime numbers at all.
And I'm assuming you get a lot of these grants, this per grant overtime.
Yeah, that, like, we have another one coming up from the third to the seventh, the DWI, uh, July fourth grant, uh, that we're getting five hundred dollars for overtime.
Eric, do you want to?
Just didn't see that one.
Yeah. What do you mean?
Explain to me, you're getting five hundred dollar grant?
Yes.
How do you, how do you get that? Um, what do you do to get part of that?
Well, uh, the Missouri Safety Center out of the University Center of Missouri, uh, in Warrensburg. Um, they actually contract through MoDOT and get grant funding from MoDOT too. Um, because they're constantly doing, uh, statistics on, um, different aspects of DWIs. Um, you know, um, all kinds of tickets that we, we issue, uh, or citations that we issue during that, those time periods. They take those statistics and report them to the National's, uh, Highway Safety Board.
So what I guess I'm saying is, who determines, if, if Dustin gets a five hundred dollar grant? Who determines how that money's gonna be spent? Uh, how mu- how much of that are you gonna get, or how much is he gonna get, or how many hours, or?
Well, I, basically how we break it up is, uh, since we have five officers, um, we're pretty fair with it. Uh, if we get five hundred dollars, each officer is allotted a hundred dollars to, you know, work. And then we figure out, uh, how much they get paid for overtime, then we take that and, uh, apply that to the, the hundred dollars. Basically like, um, I would work five hours or six hours of overtime, uh, for that grant. Is what it's, i- it's basically broken out into, and then other officers, uh, you know, you get a hundred dollars basically.
So however many hours it takes for you to.
Yeah.
At overtime rate?
Yes.
At overtime rate?
That is correct. Now, we always, hey, because we do all get paid differently, um, it never comes up to exactly five hundred dollars. Sometimes we do go over, uh, we always try to go over because we never wanna leave money out there. Uh, because if it shows that we're leaving money out there, they're gonna take away from us and give it to somebody else to use. So that's why, and plus it helps, I'm with the statistics on, uh, drug bribing, you know, uh, youth alcohol, uh, clicker tickets, uh, you know, for the, uh, Missouri Department, for your information.
Who's applying for this grant and how much time does it take to write one?
Uh, i- it's actually, the contract is sent to us and then, uh, I fill out the contract. Uh, we get it signed, I'm by, I'm sending it work, Shawna and also Dustin. I, to say that we wanna participate in the grant, uh, that's sent off. Uh, then they send us back, uh, an award letter saying, hey, this is what you're awarded, you know, stick to the contract and everything like that. Uh, and then we work the grant, we, uh, get the hours worked, how much was, was spent per officer, uh, totaled. And then I do the statistics for that time, um, uh, of timeframe, and I send them electronically and then also fax, uh, the paperwork to Missouri.
Alright, so is anybody keeping statistics on what the benefits of you actually using that grant? What I'm saying is, okay, I don't wanna hear that the only benefit is, is that we got to spend five hundred dollars in grant money so we could share overtime. I wanna know, um, what did the city benefit by participating in that?
Sure, I, like particularly the last, uh, grant that we worked, I, we actually, um, took three drunk drivers off the road, uh, which potentially saved, you know, numerous money lines. Um, and then also, uh, educated other, uh, drivers on use of seat belts, uh, hazardous driving. Uh, and all those statistics are actually held, uh, on the MoDOT website.
So, if you're working that grant, you have to keep track of that and you send that information back to them?
Correct.
Okay. Correct, good.
Yeah, all, all that information's kept on our, um, ITI, on our computer system. And then I separate it in that, and then, and on MoDOT, they have a, uh, actual spreadsheet that allows me to put in what, you know, I kind of, how many drug arrests, you know, fugitive arrests, uh, warrant arrests, ground laws suspended. It breaks it all down, and that's how we, uh, how I submit it to them.
So if you're gonna make this overtime, do you have to already have your forty hours in, in order to?
Yes.
Okay, so no matter what, you have to have forty hours in before you can start working the overtime for that?
Yeah, cause it says in our manual that you have to have forty hours.
Okay, so then what happens if, uh, what happens if you've already worked your five days, right? Then you decide on that sixth day, you wanna work four hours grant overtime?
Sure.
Um, and then the next day, something happens, I'm sick, and so now you've got overtime again.
It, it's broken down on, through payroll and also, uh, on the time sheet that we hand in. Uh, stating that we worked, uh, you know, four hours overtime grant on this day. Uh, because we actually have to show the Missouri Safety Center that the grant was worked on that day and proof of payment to the officer. Um, and then also from there, any extra overtime would be broken down as regular overtime on, like on our paycheck, if that's what you're asking. It actually states grant overtime and then regular overtime.
So with our payroll, our pay periods end on Saturdays, most of this overtime is gonna be worked on Fridays and Saturdays?
Uh, not necessarily, like, uh, the clicker ticket that we had ran, uh, two and a half weeks. So, you know, each officer, you know, the, just as an example, you know, we're given eight hours, uh, of overtime to work. You know, they, they can choose to work any of that eight hours between those dates, like the thirteenth through the.
So then they don't have to have forty hours in already for that?
In order to get paid, to put it towards the amount of the grant, um, yeah, actually, cause there was a, where I wanna say that SOTI hypothetically speaking, uh, took a day off and then they came in and worked grant. They would actually have to work more grant hours to make up that money than a hundred dollars that they were given, because they're on regular time, not overtime.
So if they're not on overtime, they can work it at regular rate?
If they're, yes, i- if they're on the grant, working grant and specified financing grant.
So then basically, you could work thirty two hours at regular time, you could work eight hours on grant.
No, I'm, from what they're saying, they, eh, like, I understand what you're saying, but you can't use the grant money to work a regular shift. Like, since we only have one on duty, I couldn't be working grant hours right now.
Well, a lot of times we have two officers on duty.
Sometimes, yes.
At least four days a week.
At least three days, you said, yes.
Alright, thank you.
Okay. So, the, I mean, I know we don't, unless you all want to, try to figure this all out in one night or we wanna have a session. The rec- uh, the recommendation from Lorraine Robbins was to try to stick with the budget we had, amend it after we have time to go over all this. Because all this just got this today.
And we can work with Shawna on, on some of those line items and, and what's transpired in the last fiscal year. Like, you know, if your property valuation, your certified rate change, that's affect your property tax number. You know, so we can work with her on some of those line items and, and you, you have better number, um, to work with. We just can't make that decision for you, so.
If I have any recommendations or what's your thoughts and opinion on all this is?
Break it down. We have more time to go through everything.
It's stuff we're gonna have to take care of fairly quickly, but I don't think doing it the same day we get it is, is good, good practice either, so.
Yeah, I mean, you guys are pretty well caught up on your monthly.
Yeah, the reconciliation's been always in May and she brought everything in through June twentieth, correct?
Possibly, everything.
So we should be able to work with them from this point.
Debbie, any comments on what you wanna do? Anybody? Gary?
What's that?
Do we want to take and accept the budget as it, as it sat last year and amend this as we have, when we get time to sit down and go over this? Lorraine Robbins said, and try to go line by line to figure this out, instead of trying to approve, make changes on the budget that we only had for.
Um, I'm okay with that, but like I said, there's gonna be, there's gonna have to be some cuts, uh, because we, I mean.
I, I agree, there's gonna be, we gotta figure out where it went, but my, I guess my concern.
Budget that the police department had given us, that we looked at last month, wasn't it? And the fire department, maybe they can take those budgets back?
Hey, uh, I know Miss Rock is not here, but like, just an example, he had a, you all get a three hundred dollar a year budget for uniforms.
I thought it was two hundred.
Okay, well, it's three.
No, thanks.
But just an example, Miss Rock is fifteen hundred and fifty five dollars, uh, Dustin McKinney, five hundred and four dollars. Fire Department, seven hundred and twelve.
I was never under the impression that we had a uniform budget and those were by turnout boots. I was under the impression that came out of one of our accounts for equipment.
Do, do units have, like a normal uniform that you just need to be there?
We purchase it personally.
Okay. Well, they, they got you for seven hundred and twelve dollars here.
Yeah, I, I saw that, uh, last week, I believe it was, and it was, it was all wrote under there, it was for turnout boots.
Okay, and that was stuff that we had approved, right?
I believe it, I believe it was retail.
Okay.
And if I'm thinking correctly, I'm, uh, Officer Rocka, some of that is his vest, which was donated by a different entity and never applied to that for some reason, and from previous.
So we may have gotten money, we just got the overtime.
Well, no, it, I'm not the city clerk and I wasn't the one working then, so I, I can't say. But I know that, uh, we actually did get a donation for his vest and it, cause I remember it saying that that uniform allowance included the cost of his vest, even though we got.
Do you know who gave the donation?
I can't think offhand right now, I apologize.
Is it called Angel Honor?
Yes.
Yes, I do remember seeing that that was.
I, I do believe it was the Ladies Auxiliary, uh, VFW here in Davidson, funnels. And, and the Elks, uh, the love script, send it.
The Elks?
Yes.
The Elks and the VFW.
The Elks and Festus.
Elks and Festus, okay.
The donation we're going with revenue and the expense will show as an expense category, so they would not net, ultimately they would net home pay for your sand revenue and expense.
Can you by chance remember who that was that, uh, paid for part of his vest?
Can you by chance remember who that was that uh paid for part of his vest?
Uh, the Elks of Festus and I do believe also the uh Ladies Auxiliary VFW in Lexington.
And then do we also buy the maintenance of the uniform?
The maintenance on their uniforms?
Maintenance, go ahead.
We always have Jackies, yes, yeah, Jackie had the same allowance, I believe, as everybody else, he'd go to get his shirts and his pants.
Are shorts allowed in that? Maintenance.
I don't wanna wear shorts and maintenance.
Okay. I'm gonna get way more involved in this and I and I don't wanna make anybody mad, but just as an example. We've got a receipt for two pairs of shorts from Walmart, size thirty-six, that was charged on a city credit card. Using the card that's in Dustin's name and um I questioned. The fire maintenance, so I forgot the guy that quit, and Dustin McKenney gave him the card, told him to go to Walmart, buy him a couple pairs of shorts to go with his shirt. I wasn't aware that shorts was part of the uniform, but that's kinda the things that's going on that has to stop, period. Um there's a lot of charges that are wrong, they're excessive, and I'm not gonna stop digging into it. I'm gonna keep digging and I'm gonna match statements with receipts because that's not being done. So the shorts is just one, an example of one thing that I found.
I'll ask a quick question. What you got here is, did you guys receive the bills to be paid this month before this meeting?
No, it's not a regular, it's, this isn't a regular meeting, um.
But here's, here's the problem, if you're, if the group's not receiving, the monthly bills to be paid, they can't look at that. That would've got caught however many months ago was. If you don't receive your bills to be paid, how can you put a motion on there to claim? If you ain't looking at them, why are you saying, I agree? You gotta look at bills, man.
Yeah, and running short.
There's, there's no excuse for not looking at the bill before you say, hey, you gotta look at it.
I've got them here for them to look over, look over.
When's the last time you guys got the bills to pay before we, how long's it been?
I mean, actual bills?
Yeah, before you come to your meeting, they're delivered to you a week before, when's the last time you got them?
Yeah, we normally, we used to get in our package.
Right. Probably since Danny was here, but like this package, I I'll be honest with you, it was sitting on the table for that, so.
Well, I'm not trying to stir, I'm just saying, if you don't get what you need to do your job.
I mean, hopefully moving forward and it stretches back out, we're moving towards that, getting stuff straight back a year ago. And I think Shauna's doing a good job, Lori Wright Robbins has been fantastic to work with to get us back, get us back to where we're supposed to be anyways. So, um Dustin, do you think part of that, the budget differential though is using uh the accounting firm to make up for the city clerk's absence? Is it that much of a difference or?
I don't know there's that much of a difference.
As far as that's best?
Yeah.
No, there's not that much of a difference, I'm just tossing out ideas on everywhere.
I mean, here's, here's, I can tell you this, um we're eleven thousand dollars over in payroll, so there's eleven thousand dollars. We're eighteen hundred and seventy-four dollars overspend in uniforms.
Unless you're looking at that monthly, you can't.
Well, and Steve, we are going to start looking at a lot of things monthly.
Well, but you have to consider you haven't had a city clerk since when, and so they haven't had good financial statements since then. Like the bank accounts weren't reconciled, so they didn't have good numbers.
I understand that on some city college, but it's a business you're running.
Approximately, how long have you guys had not had a city clerk?
Well, actually, we've had a city clerk, we just.
It's the, the.
We've, we had one quit at the end of March, and uh when was you hired, Shauna? So, April, six weeks, we didn't have a city clerk. Uh we did have uh interviews, um. We did have a meeting that was canceled, you know, for something to do with advertising or something, but. Um we've really been, there was a six week period that we had no buying.
There we get that, people, I think our question is just when we hear there's a forty something thousand dollar discrepancy, that's, I mean.
Forty-two.
Yeah, if I lost forty grand, that's half my income a year gone, so.
Well, um one thing I have seen about this budget is it looks to me like they tried to run a balanced budget. If they've got nine hundred thousand coming in, they've got nine hundred thousand going out, so. Um, you know, so it it needs to be, it needs to be worked on. And are you gonna come back and sit down and?
Yes, sure.
So, so where we sit right now is if we want to accept. The uh, if we wanna move forward with last year's budget till we can amend it, so at least we're working with the budget. Uh we have that front of us here with the. Five hundred and fifty-six, five hundred and fifty-six thousand in general fund? Hundred and seven, hundred and seven thousand five hundred in the transportation sales tax, hundred five thousand in capital improvement. Uh six hundred in the judicial judicial fund, five hundred in the DWI and a hundred thousand six, a hundred thousand six hundred. In the floor and sewer sales tax. Totally eight hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred dollars. And that is the budget that we ran from July first to uh two thousand eighteen to June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
So what you're, I guess I'm gonna interject a little bit, so when you, when you establish a budget, that that's just your your guidelines for your spending going forward. And and your budget that you establish needs to be balanced, so it's, you need to have your projections of income to balance out with your projections of expenses. And then as the year goes by, you usually want at least once a year, maybe mid-year, review those actual numbers and then amend the budget for the rest of that year. So obviously, you've had some difficulty with the the staffing issues, so you're gonna have to modify this. Uh uh you probably at this point, I would agree with with your accounting firm to to adopt this budget again for this next year. But quite frankly, it's not realistic, uh and so it has to be modified. Your your income in the general fund uh is was sixty-two thou- almost sixty-three thousand dollars less than the budgeted amount. So you you the city guessed, you estimated that the revenue would be sixty-three thousand dollars more than it was. So that's, that's really what your big issue is, and you have to budget accordingly accordingly for this next year. So I I would say since your fiscal year starts, before your next meeting, you have to adopt some sort of uh budget, um 'cause that's what you're required to do. Uh and then you need to get to work next month on amending that budget so it's more realistic before you start spending all that money. Because otherwise you're gonna end up with deficit spending next year, you don't wanna eat up your reserves.
Yeah, and I guess that's what we're, with the work session, you know, nobody's had any time, it's.
Right, I'm not, I'm not criticizing, I'm just gonna lay it out there that.
Yeah. Just trying to get it through.
No, it's just the reality, it's not a criticism, it's just you have to, have to address it, and that's by adopting this. I mean, if you, if you want to, you can go through these, these topics uh of the budget. Here, you know, you can go through it line by line if you want to, but um without having an opportunity to study it, it's gonna be a lengthy conversation.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a lengthy conversation anyway, but.
I'm going, I'm, I'm fine if the board has signed to go that direction and then in July, we do our E code stuff, just have a work session. Before our next meeting, maybe, if at all possible, or at at whatever point we can. To cover to, at that time, we'll have time to go over this and try to figure out what we wanna do and how we wanna do it, and then bring it back amended.
No, what I would suggest before that meeting is use the same format, but put in the actual numbers. Uh under revenue from this last year, and then you'll be able to see, okay, we have to find this, we're gonna have to cut, we have to find more revenue, which more revenue is difficult to find. Uh so you have to, I would, I would suggest that you have uh the actual number put in this format so that you have something real to look at as opposed to just the estimates from the previous year.
Does this one report or software shows that?
Right, so, but I, what I'm saying is, and I, I went through that while I was talking, so I could see almost, almost every category was a, was less revenue than what you anticipated. And so if you, if you have this, this document which was prepared, this, I don't know, sure, that's the one you guys are looking at. And if you have another one prepared that has the actual numbers, you can kinda look at them and you can see, oh, okay, our sales tax revenue was was down. Uh what was the number? Sales tax revenue was down thirteen thousand, almost fourteen thousand dollars under what the budget was. Uh the utility and grocery fees was down almost seventeen thousand, just those two items, excuse me, so. That's why I would suggest so that you have something concrete to look at, okay, this is, uh unless there's some major development, those numbers aren't gonna change a whole lot. Because those are about nec- economic issues.
Okay. Any more questions or comments on that one? Not, trying to get a motion to approve the budget as it stands from last year.
Amended.
And amended.
On a motion.
I get a second?
All set.
Okay.
I heard you had something.
Go ahead.
On on last year's budget that you're looking at, when, when the audit is done, they'll look at those budget numbers compared to what your actual are. And if you don't amend the June nineteen budget for the fiscal year that's ending, you're gonna have a compliance finding. In the audit report, if your expenditures are more than what you budgeted for the fiscal year that's ending right now. So you probably wanna look at that tonight and then some of the line items that are over budget.
Okay.
There was a motion in a second, I didn't hear a vote on that.
Oh, all in favor, I'm sorry. You got a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So you're recommending that they adopt or uh uh amend or current year budget to reflect the actual numbers presented in this report?
Right, for June thirtieth, so we're here for June thirtieth.
I I I agree with that recommendation, it's uh, because that way you're, you're amending your budget to reflect the reality of the spending that you did. Otherwise, like you said, the audit reports would say, well, your budget's here, that you spent more than what you budgeted or less depending on the li- line items.
We want, we need to go through these line items?
Well, not really, because they're presented to you with the actual numbers, so what you're gonna have in your minutes is to move to amend your current year budget. To reflect the actual numbers presented to you in this report.
Okay, did anybody hear that? So if I get a motion to amend our current year budget to reflect what our actual budget come out to as of June thirtieth? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Alright, likewise, a good idea to go through mid-year if you have the opportunity, like in the center of January, to amend that budget to reflect the reality. Because mid-year you may say, well, you say we gotta run this down, we gotta cut the end of the year, or we're gonna run this up, we can do something different this month.
I feel a lot closer. No, I think that's it on that one. We'll try to give you a little time when you're available.
Yeah, we can, we can get with Shauna, we'll see what her schedule allows, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the last thing on here is. Motion to uh pay our respective bills that we got over there that we just now hinged up and retaliation stuff, that's today, right? So as of today, everything has been entered into the system, um.
Yeah, well, Cindy did bring in a deposit right before four, I haven't put that deposit in, that was after Christmas off add.
Think they got any recommendations on what you wanna do, we need a motion to pay the bills because.
I'm not seeing any bills.
That's what we're saying.
She's got all the.
She's got that.
I do want to say that the credit card statements, nobody's been matching tickets, and I know we're a bit short step. No, tickets have been not been being matched up to credit card statements. And they've just been getting paid, and from here on out, I think Shauna's gonna make sure that that's done, that those tickets are turned in and they are collected.
Well, uh, we're gonna be able to look at what we're gonna pay.
Martin Muffin will look through, and I've got this, we're gonna sign for you. Did I sign it? You did, we just need um Dustin to do this, so we'll check it out. That was a for the last meeting. And we actually have those shirts now, too.
Well, um. He had just bought two new pairs of shorts that was thirty-four, thirty-five dollars, yeah, it's only thirty-four, thirty-five dollars. But uh the city paid for those and.
Do you like shorts when you're wearing shirts?
He bought shorts, but Dustin told him to go buy shorts, I don't know why.
Is that what that is?
It's on the credit card statement.
Does Dustin have the authority to do that?
I don't know where the shorts come into play because.
Does he have the authority to get somebody's card and send him the store?
I couldn't tell you.
Well, you're the board, you should know.
I mean, not that I'm aware.
No.
So I guess in.
This is, you're, you're blaming on charge staff and all, it's a business, guys, you gotta run it as a business, if you can't run this business, you're broke.
Well, um, when I questioned Andy, uh he said that Dustin give him the card, tell him to go to Walmart, buy him a couple pair of shorts to match his shirts. I don't know who gave Dustin the authority, I certainly didn't, because I'm not even authorized to use them cards. So I'm not authorized to, without the board, to authorize anybody to charge anything, so.
So by any drawup?
He went to Roqueing and bought five shirts and then he went to Walmart and bought two pair of shorts. And used credit card.
Well, that's why I'm questioning this, this payback, because I thought I seen a deal for that, but.
Um we discussed, I think, that in the last meeting, I remember for it.
That one that you just saw in there, let's go to shirts.
It's having shirts, please, so here, you can be a little houseman. We do have a May twenty-ninth bill for grass paying, a June fifth bill, um, and a June fourteenth bill, and I do know that it's dealing with a lot of rain. We're supposed to be every ten days, and that's not like ten days, but I do know the grass is growing pretty heavy, so. I don't see, I don't see any, anything in here that, um, we're wanting to pay, I don't see any credit cards or anything like that, maybe I missed them, but I'm not seeing it.
I just want credit card. I still have it in my office to take care of.
Okay, well, um, I will make a motion to pay these bills, but nothing else as you like, so.
Absolutely.
Motion on the table, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn? A motion, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.